Daniel Gonzalez, I'm the Vice Chair of the Provo City Planning Commission. I'm calling this to order. It is 6:03. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. I'll go ahead and lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty.
All right, we have six items on the agenda this evening. I just want to note that item number two has been continued. We'll start with a roll call with the commissioners saying their name and whether they have a conflict of interest. We'll begin with.
Relene Wallene, no conflict.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
All right. We'll go ahead and read item number one. Provo City Council Office requests ordinance text amendments to titles fourteen and fifteen of the Provo City Code to make corrections regarding the neighborhood district program. Citywide application. Let's get your, I think your microphone needs to be turned on.
Can you hear me now?
Okay, there we go. Eric Lemus, law clerk for Provo.
Yes, my name is Eric Lemus. I'm the law clerk for Provo City. I'm presenting item one on behalf of the council office and in place of Elizabeth Vanderwerken. So just to give you a little bit of background, back in August, the city council passed an ordinance which effective January first will repeal and replace chapter two point twenty-nine of the Provo City Code, which currently is the neighborhood program. And it will be replaced with a new neighborhood district program, which is meant to kind of streamline some of the process involved in that. And so associated with that, we have several amendments that we're proposing to titles fourteen and fifteen of the city code that have to do with the neighborhood program. And I'll walk you through a little bit of that. Okay, so the first item we have here is that we propose to delete subsection two from section fourteen point two point oh one oh of the city code. The subsection that's deleted here is no longer applicable under the new neighborhood district program. So under the old program, the neighborhood chairs would have to call neighborhood meetings for land use applications and applicants would have to notify the chairs of that and then they would have to call the meetings. While under the new neighborhood district program, all of the neighborhood district meetings will be regularly scheduled. And thus there's no need to call a special meeting for this purpose. It will just be automatically scheduled for the next available neighborhood district meeting. Okay, the second thing that we want to change is from section fourteen point two point oh two oh. I just wanted to make a note that we're no longer proposing to delete the entire subsection one here. We're only going to delete subsection one B, which is the part that says contact the neighborhood chairs for the neighborhoods affected by the application as provided in section two point two nine point oh four oh two B Provo City Code. Again, that's the section where the neighborhood chairs would call a neighborhood meeting to discuss those applications, which is no longer necessary because they will be regularly scheduled. So we're keeping the rest of that subsection. And the rest of the amendments that we want to propose are along these lines, you know, just updating the code to reflect the new neighborhood district program. We wanted to just update some typos that are in some of the sections and clarify some other things. Does the commission have any questions at this point?
You're saying all of page five is going to be still included. It's only on page six, item B. That's being removed.
Are you referring to section fourteen point two point oh two oh? Yes, we are only going to delete subsection one B, which is the contact the neighborhood chair. The rest of that will remain.
Any other questions from the commission members?
Yes, this new proposal on the neighborhood district program. Is it going to eliminate a number of neighborhood chairs? Combine them? What exactly is it going to do?
So currently there are thirty-four, I believe thirty-four neighborhoods in Provo. And under the new neighborhood district program, those same thirty-four neighborhoods will remain, but they will be grouped into five neighborhood districts. And then each neighborhood district will have an executive board that consists of a chair, a vice or two vice chairs and a secretary. It's my understanding that the neighborhood chairs in the existing program will be on executive boards of the neighborhood districts going forward.
Is there proposed language that that's included that for the neighborhood district program? I didn't, I'm not sure if I missed it in the packet.
So the neighborhood program currently is chapter two point twenty-nine of the city code and the new program will also be chapter two point twenty-nine. However, it's not effective until January first, so it's not found on the online version.
So that because it's not in a title fourteen or fifteen, doesn't come before the planning commission? So those changes wouldn't be seen by you guys?
Yeah, I yeah, I guess the only, the only thing for me would be kind of some. I mean, I guess it's not under our purview, but that the representation of those neighborhoods would still be within on the executive boards and districts. Let's, does anyone else have any questions? Well, let's go ahead and.
I've got actually one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On page thirteen, it says, applications for zone changes and general plan amendments. Unless the application is filed by city staff or a citywide impact will be placed on the agenda for a neighborhood district meeting by the neighborhood coordinator. And this maybe speaks a little bit to what Danny is talking about, like just the framework of that. I'm assuming what you're talking about is the neighborhood coordinator is a staff position that is going to be managing those regularly scheduled agendas for the five or so districts or how many districts there are?
Five districts.
Five districts.
Yeah, that is correct. The neighborhood coordinator is part of the council office and in the new neighborhood district program. It says that the neighborhood coordinator in the municipal council office shall be responsible for the meeting schedule. So anything that needs to be put on the agenda will be done by the neighborhood coordinator.
All right. Go ahead. This is a citywide application. So is there any, are there any neighborhood chairs present that would like to come up and make us, thank you, Mr. Lemus. Let's go ahead. Citizen Bogdan. I don't, should I call you by your last name or Becky first name?
I prefer Becky. Citizen Bogdan would be my mother-in-law in a different town. But thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. Um, did you guys get the email from Sharon Memmet? It's one that's been circulating. Um, first name Becky, last name Bogdan, city residence Provo, Utah. No, you haven't gotten Sharon's email?
I don't, I, I, I don't recall.
The gist of the conversation was the concern, it came back from the council office that this would no longer be a part of city code, that they would put it in a handbook for the neighborhood district program. So that is a concern that Sharon had. It's a concern I share. Instead of changing in here where it says neighborhood program, it looks like they're striking everything out, including noticing of the residents. And so the preference for myself and Sharon, I can email that email later, but you probably won't get it still. Would be to leave it intact, but just change the names like we assumed was going to happen. Instead of removing it from the code and placing it in a handbook somewhere. We're concerned that this is the purpose of a lot of the neighborhood program is to know what's coming, especially if it's within a hundred yards of your home, have a presentation and be able to know when it's coming to planning commission and city council to comment on that. So those are concerns. Any questions? All right, thanks.
Mr. Lemus, you have, you have a response?
Yes, so in response to that, you know, the section of the code that's currently displayed right now, as I mentioned, we're only going to be deleting subsection one B from that. The rest of that is going to remain. And the neighborhood district meetings will be regularly scheduled. We're looking at probably like every six weeks. And the agendas for those meetings will be available. So the meetings will still be happening. It's just that instead of the neighborhood chairs calling the meetings for special purposes, they will just be regularly held. So there will still be opportunities for people in those neighborhoods to come participate.
Can you, can you address the comment of having it being removed from the code? Putting in a handbook?
Which specific thing are we talking that's being removed from the code?
Well, I, I'm assuming she was referring to this entire thing is being removed. Is that correct?
Well, under the new program, I mean, some of the policies will be put in the handbook and aren't specified in the code, but I can go to other slides. Like on this one, for example, it specifies that the neighborhood coordinator is going to put certain items on the agenda for the meetings. This is reflected in a couple of other sections that we're proposing as well.
And I think the, the main response to that is it is still codified. It's, it's currently in two point two nine and it will still be codified in two point two nine. It's just the program's evolving and changing.
Okay, any other public comment? This is open for public comment. We had, anyone else like to make a statement on this? Being done. We'll go ahead and close the public comment and we'll discuss among ourselves. I'll, I'll go ahead and go ahead and make a comment. I do like the idea of a regularly scheduled neighborhood meeting. I, we've seen before where when they do come up specially, sometimes they're not. They're, they're, they're noticed, right? The, the neighborhood meetings, they're noticed properly. But sometimes they just fall through the cracks. Um, I, I don't know exactly where that happens, but it feels like they fall through the cracks, cracks. But having something regularly held kind of ensures that everybody's on the same page and knows when a meeting will happen and they'll there won't be that excuse to say, I didn't know about this meeting because this is one that will be regularly scheduled. That's just a general kind of thought as I kind of work through this, but anyone else have any comments?
I like the, the key issues here, the objectives, I think are really sound in terms of making it easier streamlined. And, and what, like you said, I, I'm not sure that it's, well, it's apparently not under our purview to look at the neighborhood program, but it, we do get those comments. And so at a minimum, it might be appropriate for us to have a study session where we understand the new neighborhood program a little bit better and how we interact with that. And that would certainly help me, but far as the goals and the objectives, what's being proposed here, I don't, I don't have a lot of, I don't have any problems with it.
Any further discussion? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll just make a comment that I, I share the concern as a neighborhood that neighborhoods need to know what's coming and but knowing that they're not taking out section one. So I think that and that it's merely taking out the content of the neighborhood chairs for the.
Anyone else want to make a comment or, or a commissioner, not anyone else, any, any other commissioner comment or or would like to put forward a motion?
I put forth. Uh, I put forth the motion that we send a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number one. Provo City Council Office requests ordinance text amendments to titles fourteen and fifteen of the Provo City Code to make corrections regarding the neighborhood district program with citywide application.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
Um, we'll go down the row and do a roll call. Mrs. Willene?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion passes five zero. Go ahead and go to item three. Ryan Thompson requests a general plan map amendment from a residential designation to an airport-related designation in order to develop. I did skip, I, I heard someone say I skipped to item two has been continued.
What?
Two is continued. Item two is continued. It won't be on the next agenda, so it may be.
It will not be discussed here.
It will not be discussed tonight.
I did, I did mention that at the beginning of the, the meeting. Let me just finish reading this in. From a, from a residential designation to an airport-related designation in order to develop flex warehouse office space located at thirty-four ten West Center Street, Port Utah neighborhood, Mr. Ardmore.
Okay, thank you. So this is a general plan amendment request for this property. Right next to the, the new Lakeview Parkway on the east and Center Street on the south. Um, now this, this general plan amendment, uh, because it was already part of, uh, the general plan and also the appendix to the general plan in that being part of the Southwest Future Land Use Map. Early on in this proposal, in this concept, uh, the, the applicant and staff both reached out to the neighborhood chair of the area. And, and in your packet, in your staff report, you'll see the, the kind of, kind of in-depth process that uh, the neighborhood chair went through with reviewing this request and, um, the request in, in item four, you'll see as well. Um, the kind of review together by this neighborhood, uh, in, in reviewing what would be best for these properties. Um, not only through the typical neighborhood meeting, but through, um, open city hall and kind of a, a key group that kind of took a more in-depth look at this. Um, so you'll, you'll have those comments in your staff report. Uh, I'm not going to go over those again. Uh, the reason that staff is supporting it, let me kind of jump forward, oops. Uh, so currently it's residential. Um, as you can see, there's, there's some key aspects to this that I wanted to point out, uh, that, that led staff to support this amendment. Uh, this, this portion of Provo City is really bound. Um, it's, you've got Provo River there on the north. Uh, you've got Lakeview Parkway now on the east, Center Street on the south, and then, uh, to the west is, uh, campgrounds and ropes course right there. Uh, so it would, uh, if it stayed residential, it'd be, uh, kind of a small little pocket unto its own. Uh, between two major roadways, a river and non-residential uses. Um, so instead, when we were approached, uh, on this idea of changing it to airport-related designation. We, we were ready to listen and, and see what that could bring. So on this, you'll see the, the particular concept that's related to this request, uh, that would be coming to you in the future. If the council does decide to approve this general plan use change. Uh, this would come back to you as a rezone and concept plan, but this kind of just kind of gives you idea of why they're asking for that. Uh, it's like industrial warehouse park. It's a growing demand. You've, you've seen a couple of these come through in the last couple of months further south of here and, and what you can see is already airport-related in the general plan. Uh, the most recent one was, I believe, six fifty-two South Lakeview Parkway, uh, where there's three large buildings of this type of space. Uh, there's a demand for it. Uh, we think it's appropriate. Um, in this area of the city, it's, it's close to the airport. It's along two major roadways. Um, and in addition, residential use here while it, it could be successful, uh, currently there is a flight path that goes directly over this, these two prop, or these two properties here, uh, which was shown in, in your staff report as well. And I, I believe I have a slide on the next. Over this, these two prop- are these two properties here, uh which was shown in in your staff report as well, and I I believe I have a slide on the next. And the next item for that. But those are those are some of the main reasons that staff supports this general plan amendment. Um, if you have any questions for me, I I'll try to address them. Oh, I would also note. Uh, there is, I can go back a slide. So the general plan amendment request is just for this in red. Um staff looking at kind of future ideas um would. Like to add this on. Um so if that could. If we would recommend recommending to the city council that that be included in the general plan amendment. Uh where this is just kind of this triangle here is this kind of leftover space that was is currently owned by the city. But was purchased by the city to build the bridge, but now the bridge is built. Not all of that needs to be kept by the city. So as a way to look towards the future, uh we'd want to kind of adjust that being the same uses this and providing access through this parcel. Um but that is all I have.
Aaron, wasn't that area that you're saying that you want to include the parcel that's owned by the city? Wasn't it going to be a park?
No, that is actually further east. That's on um. Lake, what's the what's the road further east? Lake Shore Drive, thank you. Lake Shore Drive is where the new park is going to go.
Thought at one time that we talked about that little spot right off from the river that was going to be made into a park.
Yeah, it looks super similar to to this, but it's it's on that Lake Shore Drive corridor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm I'm curious. I'm there. I understand that there's parts of the general plan that encourage this. Type of commercial development, but I'm also, there's also other parts of the general general plan that encourage. Housing and so I'm I'm wondering like what. Oh, you know, what what parts i- i- in the scales of housing and commercial development, what um? Both of which are needed. And can't be ignored. I'm just curious what tilted the scales for you.
That's a good question. Uh in this case. When the West Side Land Use Map was created and you guys have seen that many times and you've used that to evaluate projects several times. When that map was created, staff spent hundreds of hours interviewing and surveying actual property owners as to what. Their future plans were for their own property. And that information helped inform the map. In this case, the larger parcel, which is, I think, your next item, right? It's the larger parcel to the west, your next item. That property owner was a member of the steering committee and that property owner wanted to have residential on this property. So we didn't, staff didn't really think about it any further than that, but uh as it is raised in the staff report, if you look at the airport runways and flight paths. That might not have been the best decision just based on the flight path of that one run one runway. Now, the airport master plan does call for that runway to go away and be replaced with a parallel one to the one that's staying, but we don't know how long that's going to take to make that happen. So that's how that got res- that's how that got designated as residential in the first place. As far as what should stay residential, what we should be open-minded to changing. That's so specific to each property and the characteristics of each property, it's hard to give a blanket answer to that. Um but I think if somebody had suggested at the time we were creating land use map, hey, would you guys think about commercial or or industrial here? What would you think? Uh, we probably would have had to admit that that makes some sense. Does that answer your question, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I I think so, yeah.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Uh it says here. That we recommend that planning work on a plan to redistribute approximately hundred residential units currently allocated to the location. Are there any plans yet? Any ideas of where to relocate those hundred units?
No, anytime um something like this happens and uh. This, the um. Utility connections, especially sewer, will be reduced. You're not going to have the same number of. Sewer connections for industrial spaces you would have for residential. The staff is kind of keeping track of those. Um in case there are places where we where we think they may be needed in the future. So we're keeping track of those. But there's been no decision as to where they would go. We we don't know at this time where they would go.
I have a an additional question. I I. There's a lot of talk of not there not being a lot of commercial and and retail services and.
On the west side.
On the west side and uh. Why not have a a an amendment that also allows for for retail development? Professional services, restaurants.
Yeah, that that is such a big priority to the administration that there's actually a weekly meeting on. Trying to make a grocery store on the west side happen. That is a weekly meeting with.
Well, I mean, thi- this this intersection in particular, um. What Lakeview Parkway and Center Street, it it seems like. It's prime for that also.
Yes, so.
And and it, I don't know, to me it. Feels a little bit, maybe not, if if it is going to go that way, that maybe not the highest best use uh. Or or meeting a need that that the neighborhood needs.
So there actually have been discussions among the staff about. A commercial note here for exactly that. We haven't broached the developer about that yet because it's still pretty nebulous. But discussions are going on on that. There's also discussion on several other parcels on the west side for possible grocery stores. I mean, there's. Three or four places the staff is trying to chase down. For commercial amenities on the west side and working on those three or four is a daily, is a is a weekly thing among the staff. The economic development directors here, he'd be happy to address that if you want any further information, but that's about all I can tell you.
Thank you.
I have one question. Uh maybe this is for Mr. Day, but it does say on there that the there's no. There is currently no sewer capacity available at this location until planned capital improvement projects are completed.
Uh and and that is correct. Um and I'm pretty sure the developers are aware of that issue. We entered into a development agreement on the. Uh this parcel to the west when it was rezoned to identify that issue. And and really, it's just. The fact that um there's no sewer there currently. Uh that can be hooked on to until. The regional lift station down by the airport is operational. And taking the sewer to the the treatment plant to the east. The best information we have right now is that that'll be online sometime next year at this time. But uh. We don't want people uh. Planning a development and realizing, hey, there's no sewer here right now, so. It probably won't be an issue, you know, by the time they get. Things underway to do some sort of a development. It's probably a year out anyway, but. We want to be clear that the sewer is currently not available right there. But it's being worked on. So that, does that address your?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, just another, I don't know if Mr. Ardmore would like to respond to this, but uh. One of the staff responses talks about. It's developed as residential, it'd be cut off from the rest of the neighborhood by roadways and and the river. And on the other hand, it 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 cuts off the river. Uh access to to other potential residents and. I'm wondering how.
There's, yeah, there's a couple of things that I could say on that, I think. Um so currently, i- it's private property, so people don't have river access there right now, right? Additional to that or on top of that, uh with the the River Delta Gateway Project. Uh this section of the river isn't going to be what it once was. It's just going to be a really low. Flow. Kind of more of a creek at this point because all of that's going up to the uh to the northwest. Um, and I guess the third part of that is. If the the rezoning concept plan continue going forward, say if this is approved, the rezon concept plan can continue going forward the way they are proposed. Uh they do, they do show recognizing the river as an amenity and and kind of using that and their in their industrial park.
Aaron, I go this is probably for item four, but seems like when we did. Uh pass the zoning change for the residential in the in the property to the west. There was going to be some kind of a trail along the river that they were going to develop. I know there's a trail on the north side of the river.
Right.
But we also talked about as part of the residential there along the edge of the river. There was going to be a park or not, maybe not a park, but.
Not a park, but yeah, it was.
Walking place, it may be a place where people could sit and look over the river, has a pretty view there.
Maintained by an HOA, yeah. Uh I think that was part of the concept of the residential development there is that HOA would maintain uh some sort of. Amenity with the river there. Um but I I don't think changing the general plan to airport-related would. Uh necessarily remove that amenity. I think that they have made that known that that's that's an important aspect of this property to them.
Mr. Newton, I think that'd be a good question to ask the developer on the next item. My understanding is they were proposing enhancing that walkway if it's industrial over what it was going to be if it was residential. But that'd be a good question to ask the applicant on the next one.
Uh Mr. Keep, did you, did you want to, did you, I I saw you come up, did you, did you want to take a moment to? Make a statement?
I can. I didn't expect the conversation to go this direction, so I was caught a little bit by surprise. Um, just. Historical reference for everyone to know, um I'm Keith Moore. I'm the Economic Development Director for the city and the Assistant Director of Development Services. I was hired in January of twenty twenty. And when I was hired, the mayor sat me down and gave me a couple of priorities. The number one priority was to try to find a way to get a grocery store on the west side. Um, we meet on that specific topic every single week. For at least a half an hour discussing how are we progressing? What are we doing? What can be done? Are there other things that can be done? So it's a very, very. High priority. I mean, there's not really another accountability that I have that's as important as that one is. Um and so we're constantly looking and evaluating sites and properties all over the west side. This is one that we have looked at and we've talked about. Um, there've been different people that have expressed interest in that. Um it was under. Uh there was somebody that had, I think, an option on it for a period of time. I don't think that that exists anymore, but we're still looking at this as an op- option. We're looking at the piece of property at the corner of Center and Geneva um as another one, of course, that one's historically been one. There's another one north. On two thousand north uh that we're considering as a possible development opportunity in the commercial node where the Ivory Project is up there. And down there on the piece of property that we rezoned about a year and a half ago on Lakeview Parkway and I fifteen. And those two commercial parcels that are down there, we're we're looking at the possibility of creating some kind of a commercial note there as well. So the the big problem that we have uh in the analysis that's been done by other entities, not by us. Um, they usually hire third-party consultants to evaluate the viability of retail establishments. The number of rooftops on the west side still is an issue. And the um, the fact that there's a little bit of a uh Provo historically has a a little lower income level. Compared to some of the rest of the cities in the county and that hurts us. Um so when they look at establishing a grocery store. Um they look at what kind of shoppers will they have? What's their demographic? What's their, the amount of disposable income they have? And so that's been a hurdle for us to overcome. So um those are just some things we're trying to figure out ways around and ways that we can offset some of those impacts to see if we can encourage a store. Um to happen sooner than later on the west side. Does that help?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you.
Of course.
Do any other commissioners have comment or questions for staff? Alright, uh. With that, I'll I'll invite the neighborhood chair to come up. It's the Fort. Yeah, please state your name and which uh neighborhood you represent.
I'm Jonathan Hill, Fort Utah Neighborhood Chair, Residence in Provo. Um, so yeah, as was mentioned in the staff report, uh we went through quite a process for this. To give a little history. For those in attendance here, uh when we made the land use map for this region, this area was originally. Marked as a residential area. Uh at the time, as Bill said, that was mostly driven by landowner uh requests or desires. Um, a developer did uh purchase this property and started the process at looking at a residential property there and several concerns came up. Um, they then came to the city and said, hey, we want to change our plan to an airport-related. Uh business park type development in this area. Because this would change the land use map that we just made a few years ago, because we want these maps to stay relatively steady, right, and consistent over time. Uh Bill asked me as a member of that land use map committee to bring together other members of that committee. Uh to form kind of an ad hoc review committee for this one. So myself, Aaron McColo, uh Rick Smith, Wendy Newman. And Robert Knutson uh met a couple of times during the summer. We heard the developer's proposal in the first meeting and during that meeting, uh several issue, potential issues came out that we decided to follow up on. Uh the major one was the location of the runway that puts air traffic directly over this property and the adjoining property. And so uh we started looking into that. We reached out to the airport and got a response that yes, that was a concern for them. That the traffic would be quite low and potentially quite noisy for the the residents in that neighborhood. Uh, the other one was the impact on sewer and roadways. Whenever you change a development, that's going to impact those differently. So we reached out to Public Works. Got an email response that uh a light industry business park type development here would have. Uh lower traffic and lower sewer impacts than a residential uh development here. And so. Uh with those concerns in mind and with the development proposed, uh we felt that it was a an improvement over what was the existing one. Now, I should note, we did not compare to or even consider what might be the ideal in our minds. Uh we were just comparing the two options. That were in front of us and felt like this was better than the residential option that was already approved. Of note, since that time, we've also had a neighborhood or a couple of neighborhood meetings. The first neighborhood meeting was uh very poorly attended. And so we tried to do another one. Um and the second one was also not well attended. We only had a few families there. I did talk to those families afterwards, um and they told me that. Honestly, they were fine either way, if it's residential or business. A key thing here is the fact that Lakeview Parkway comes through and Center Street's there, and so residents around there felt like they create a buffer zone. That kind of separates uses um and at least in an industrial park, wouldn't feel like it was encroaching on the existing neighborhood in that case. Um there are a couple of other residents here uh who expressed concerns and they'll probably uh express those concerns themselves. Do you guys have any questions for me on that process that we took or what we saw? Oh, a couple of other notes because they've come up, sorry. Uh we do also think that that uh staff proposed expansion should be in there. Because it's going to become a secluded weed patch otherwise, so I think it's essential that that's part of it. And then the developer, when he presented, did talk about how residential plan was originally to have white fences, final fences along there with a narrow. Access road type trail along the dike of the river. Um and has proposed that within a business park, they will actually make uh kind of a fitness trail with improved. Um workout stations, picnic tables, those kinds of things, and have promised to keep it publicly accessible. And so we believe that. Public access to the river will actually improve over the new proposal or with the new proposal over the old one. So you had a question?
Um you just had mentioned that you didn't take into account what would be the ideal. Curious what would be the ideal?
Well, I think, you know, I haven't considered it carefully. I think uh my personal philosophy is that. Property owners should have a lot of leeway to do with their land what they want to do with their land, and I believe the market forces help dictate what should be done there. From a neighborhood community point of view, what I look at are what are those impacts on the surrounding neighborhood? And so I focus solely on, you know, would there be negative impacts on the neighborhood? Would there be positive impacts? And how does that relate with the different options? Um obviously, you know, I mean, you'll you'll find people that will want parks everywhere, for example. Um, there is a park coming in. Robert alluded to this. It's actually one block to the east and up the. Top corner of the picture would be the southwest corner of that park. So there's already a park in close proximity there. Um and actually, the river trail will connect between that park and this property as well. So I think there's good, that need is met. I I've had people say there are businesses that could utilize the river and try to incorporate the river. Um I think that's a very intriguing idea and I would not say I was opposed to that. Um however, I don't know. You know, if that's market feasible, right, in the marketplace. And then. And then finally, others have said, hey, we should keep this as a residential agricultural place where people could have small horse ranches, things like that. And I think that sounds beautiful. I love that idea. But again, I don't know if the market can sustain that. And so that's why I kind of just focus on what is being presented and what are the impacts that we can see? Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
We'll go ahead and open this portion of the meeting to the public comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Pepperoni. The, let's hear from the applicant, the, someone representing the applicant here. Please state your name and your title and organization.
Yes, Dave Morton, Sandy, Utah. And I am the lead developer on these parcels. Thank you so much, commissioners. I appreciate your help on this. One of the things that I'd like to highlight that hasn't been really outlined is that part of the reason we're, we're doing this to focus on highest and best use, which was mentioned earlier. And that is that the uses that we were proposing are complementary to the airport. 10 or 15 years ago, we probably would have never assumed that we would have Allegiant Breeze flying out of Provo Airport. And so as that airport continues to expand, the thought was to provide uses that are close proximity to the airport that would be complementary. And so we think that that is one of the, the highlights of what we're attempting to do here. So when you're discussing highest and best use, we believe this is a higher and better use than residential. In addition, it was mentioned that specific to the trail, very good point, our goal would be to actually enhance. If we can go to the next slide, I think it's the next one. This will show it a little bit more in detail. I don't have that, the, so there is a to the north, you'll, you can see a line that goes along the south side of that river. That is the proposed trail that will essentially be along the river. Part of what we're proposing here, since there will not be a vinyl fence that will be along that, we are going to preserve what we would call sight view to the river. So when you look from Center Street, you'll actually be able to see the actual river itself. And then we will provide public access to that river and include some amenities such as lookout stations, some different amenities that are outlined there to really kind of preserve that, that use. It's, it's a beautiful area right there. And the thought would be is that we would preserve that and, and allow that to be actually used in a higher priority than it would if it was a residential use.
You mind if I ask a few questions?
Yeah, please.
Uh, just, I, I did note on the map, uh, when looking at the, you had the workout stations. Can you tell us a little bit more about those?
Yeah. So those were simply original, just those are placeholders currently where the goal would be to work with the city on coming up with something. But some of our thoughts would be, they would be similar to little areas where people, similar to how the, the ninja warrior type workout station areas where people could actually, you know, do pull ups and setups and things of that nature along there. Some areas where they would have some benches and picnic tables. So kind of some of the newer, some of the newer parks are having some of those types of amenities that are really used a little bit more often. So that was part of the thought process that we had.
Would, would each of those workout stations include picnic tables and stuff? I imagine for employees.
Some of them, yes, yes, exactly. Some of those would. Some, I think we've got some lookout areas and even possibly some, some small areas where the actual river could be accessed directly in some of those proposals. So our goal would be to, as we got a little bit farther down the road, to fine tune that and actually get more specific on what those exactly would be. But I think that's our goal is to really leverage the river in this area for not just the, the individuals that were, would be working there, but also to the public to provide access to the river at that stage. So in addition, we have met with some of, several of the other neighbors, some of them positive, some of them negative. And so there is some, you know, it, it goes a little bit both ways depending upon, you know, kind of where you sit.
Any other commissioners have comments or questions for, for the applicant?
Thank you. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to come back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Yeah, I'm, we're ready for public comment. I, uh, we're going to limit each person to come up two minutes. Please state your name and your, where you live. I just want, we, we typically only give you a couple of meetings ago, we had like some rebuttals and stuff. And please, please try and include all your, your comments in, in the time allotted. And if there's some more, if there's unanswered questions, uh, please discuss them with staff. I hope, I hope you're, you're able to communicate everything that's important to you in, in those two minutes. I'll, I'll go ahead and open. Please come up.
My name is Benjamin Allen. I'm the owner of Class Ropes Course Next Door. And like Jonathan Hill, I also believe that the landowner should be able to sell their land for the best and highest amount of money. And so of course I'd rather have cows next to me. I've always said that the cows are the best neighbors that we've ever had. They never give us any trouble. But he needs to sell the land. And so I would rather have the warehouses than residential. If there's any way that the developer, and I've already talked to them about it, that if they can think of ways to preserve along the river even more, like the little warehouse that's back in the very far corner, maybe.
Flex, building flex labeled flex one on the map.
Yeah. So maybe if that could be a marriage reception center, you could see how that would fit the river much better than a warehouse, or maybe it could be a bed and breakfast, or maybe it could be a you know, there's, there's a lot of ideas that people could, could put forward so that it could make it fit the river as it's closer to the river and as we're closer to Center Street, then obviously warehouses would be fine. Yeah, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate your comment.
Hi, my name is Mikel Hines and I live about a mile north of here. We also own a seven acre piece to the west of here on the north side of the river. And I really don't like public speaking, so the fact that I'm standing here right now should show you how passionate I am about this. I've lived in Utah my entire life. I've lived in Provo for the last 20 years. I have been running this river trail for the last 13 years. I actually just looked at my app. I've ran 6,000 miles on this river trail. I know it from front to back. I know it all. And I can say without a doubt, this section of the river trail besides up in Provo Canyon is the most beautiful piece of the river trail. And with all of the big trees and the fields to the north, you are probably aware, but there's a lot of protected agriculture land that comes almost all the way down to the river and we are working to try to get more of that protected. The, the developer actually contacted me to try to purchase my piece so that he could expand this project across the river on the north side in the county. That strip of river right there running north and south, there are, I don't know what kind of owls they are, but they're very big. They come and they nest there every year and have babies. There's bald eagles just barely east of here that come and nest every winter. There are red foxes here and this is all on the north side. I feel like it's been a little bit of a slippery slope where this was agricultural land and then it went to residential. And it seems like a drastic move to then move it to this. I also am feeling really bad for any of those homeowners right there that are getting surrounded by this. I don't know, maybe they're selling. Class ropes course is such an amazing asset to the city and I feel like this will kind of deter from the whole feeling of that environment. I'm not saying to keep it farmland. I know that's impossible, but I just ask that may maybe do something besides an industrial park. One last quick thing, this river trail on the south side is supposed to be an equestrian trail and that new park coming in just a, the one they were talking about has actually parking for horse trailers. So people can come and use this entire south side of the trail as an equestrian trail. So anyway, an equestrian community would be neat, but I know that's a long shot. Anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name and, and where you live and thank you.
Sean Miller. I live just north of the river. I, I'm on the agricultural commission, so I have concerns about agriculture as well. I think it's worth lamenting anytime we lose farmland here in the city. I'm also the father of Miles Miller and he sends his regards. I'm sort of ambivalent about what we put here, whether residential or commercial. My main concern is the river itself. This will affect about three quarters of a mile of the trail. Visually, what is it going to look like? It's been said that you'll be able to see the river from the south side. That seems unlikely. From the north side, currently you can't really see anything because the dike on the south side is so high. So my major suggestion is to keep the dike, keep it tall, keep the trees. Whether or not there's a trail there, again, I'm, I'm, I don't really care. The trail that matters is the one on the north side. Visually, when people use the trail, the existing trail, it'd be nice if you didn't have to see the backside of a commercial warehouse. I think as it sits now, you'll be able to see very little, especially on that north, south section. The dike is very tall there. So I would hate to see the dike come down. I'd hate to see the trees removed. It is very wild. It's very unimproved and I think ideally it should stay that way. As, as Mikel mentioned, this is one of the most beautiful sections of the river trail. It's one of the most used sections of the river trail. We'll lose that if it becomes totally surrounded by anything, right? Visually in particular. And so that's my main recommendation is that we make sure that we don't diminish the quality of the current trail visually. Or I think even if we were putting exercise stations, that it's not really appropriate for the space. Leave it wild. Don't cut down trees. The great horned owls are there. They've been there a long time. Lots of other wildlife as well. So thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, Mr. Miller. There's a lot of people here. I want to make sure everyone has a chance to feel comfortable coming up. We really value your, your input and insight. We can limit you to, can we limit you to one minute?
The part of the river trail just east of Geneva is backed by warehouse space. And there is a lot of criminal activity there and transients there. I've actually had people turn me away quite a few times when I get to that section and they say, don't continue going any further on this river trail. There's just bad stuff going on and I worry that this is going to bring transients and crime to the backsides of these warehouses where there's nobody that can really watch and see what's going on back there. So anyways, that was my other concern with this.
Thank you. I don't see any other public comment. Does the applicant want to make any clarifying statements in regards to the neighborhood comments? The one, I, one I'm curious to hear some feedback on is keeping it wild with demolition of if there's any contemplation of demolishing trees along any of the.
I mean, absolutely, we would be interested in trying to keep what we could naturally. I mean, I think there's currently right now, I believe there's a hundred foot buffer off of the, off of the river itself. And so there wouldn't be anything that would be generally touched there. The trail is something that had been required by us. So we, we have a development agreement. So we're required to put a trail currently right now on the residential piece. But again, if we would be happy to work through, it, it doesn't have to, as I indicated, workout stations may not be the right fit for that, but we would be absolutely willing to work with the neighborhood as we have in the past and try to find some uses that make sense and a, and a kind of a trail and its location that would make the most sense and it'd be as safe as possible. One of the outlines is that we believe that this use would make the trail and anything behind there actually safer. Again, we were required by the development agreement to place a, a fence along the, on the south side of the trail. So there would be kind of an alley feel, if you would, along that trail, which would in many ways be less safe than kind of the openness that we would leave in this type of a use. And so, but again, we would be happy to work with the local residents in the neighborhood to try to make something that was, that benefited everybody as best we could. That would be our goal.
My only response would be, would be that I personally wouldn't want to see a, a, the loss of a, of trees because it doesn't affect the other side at, at the expense of a workout area.
For certain, absolutely. And, and I think we would, we would agree with that. Absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Pepperoni has a comment.
If, if the general plan amendment is approved by the city council, this will have to come back through the process for the zone change. The zone change would have to be accompanied or would need to be accompanied by a development agreement that would address these issues and be very specific in how it's addressed. The, we'll give a lot of thought to this with the developer if this moves forward. But one thing that will be hard to balance and how hard to make happen is keeping it wild makes it difficult to keep it, making it safe. Because the more wild you keep it, the more you preclude sight into the area. And it's having sight in the area and activity along the area that makes it safe and chases out the unsavory people that you don't want there. So we're going to have to work through that and try to figure out how to balance that. But I'm just pointing out right now that that's going to take some thought to work through that. Because those are kind of divergent concepts.
And is the dike staying? Is that?
If they do have a one, a 100 foot setback from the river, I would be pretty sure the dike is within that at 100 feet. Is that right, Dave? Yeah, the dike is within 100 feet.
Oh, we'll go ahead and close public comment and we'll discuss amongst ourselves. Any commissioner want to have an immediate response?
This area that I talked about one time, just a few minutes ago about that it was going to be a park area. They've been doing a lot of work in there. And they're trying, I think they're best to leave a lot of the newer trees, the younger trees. I see that they have removed a lot of the older trees that were broken. So I would think that maybe that would be something that they would have to consider as they went through this new area, whether they would have to go through and kind of remove some of the wild part of it, the older part that's dead and decayed and, and leave the newer trees so that it would kind of remain as a wild area.
Got one question, maybe Mr. Ardmore, you can help me with this one. And it's probably because we've just been discussing the, the new general plan. But this notion of connecting the lake to the mountains, and I know you had mentioned that the river projects that are going on just north of here. Do you mind just giving a brief overview of what this, what this would do in terms of that, that broader objective of trying to connect? That broader objective of trying to connect the, the lake with the mountains and.
Uh, like has been commented on, um, I, I feel like this concept. More than the residential concept that we saw get approved. Is benefiting that goal, that objective of, of facing the river, opening to the river, having. Amenities along it, um, and keeping that view, uh, to the mountains. These aren't going to be tall buildings. The houses would probably be taller than, than some of these buildings, right? Um, so, so I think it does, uh. Try to meet some of those objectives.
Thank you.
Does. Does airport related include, uh, commercial?
Yes. Yeah. So, um, within the airport related general plan designation. Uh, the staff, time staff has written airport zones. So there's airport zone, which encompasses airport itself. Then there's airport industrial zone. Which does have a number of, uh, retail and commercial permitted uses in the zone.
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, this one's all, I'm just. Hopefully sparking some more feedback from you guys, but I, this one's a little bit. We're striking a, a balance between. Two great needs in the community, right? Commercial development and. Residential. You hate to see one go at the expense of another. Yeah, go ahead and turn on your mic.
I feel like if you go back to what they said with the flight. Route, I just feel like I wouldn't want. My home under, underneath that, but maybe. Not as relevant. But I think it's perfect for, uh. For businesses there and buildings, as long as they keep the back. They said they will.
I, I agree with that. And I think if there's commitment from the city to try and find those hundred homes, you know. Their places for those home, that the noise of the airport strip that. And it will get removed, but we don't know when. Um, and I do think this meets the need of the. Airports usage, so it's complimentary to that. And I like that there will be an increased enhancement of the. Basically of the river and. I think this is better for the river than to have a white fence. You know, I would be in favor. I think this is good.
No, I, I do like, I mean, the. You know, on the one hand, you do get a south side, uh, south of the river, um. Trail access or new trail. And, and we've, I, we've talked before in other projects of. Uh, capitalizing on. Our river and, and amenities along the river. I don't know if I'm convinced that having a flex industrial is. Best. I had hoped that there would at least be like more. Commercial retail. There's room for that, obviously, in, in the. Change in the plan amendment and I, I hope. I mean, you'll use the time, if, if you get that, if, if we do recommend approval and city council recommends approval, I hope, I hope you'd use that to. Investigate. Really capitalize on the, the amenity of the river. But I still, I still mixed feelings.
I, I also think that many of the other issues that have come up or that have been mentioned will be addressed in the development later, so. How to keep crime down and not removing trees and.
Any commissioner want to put forth a motion?
I can. I motion that the planning commission recommend to the municipal council approval of the proposed general plan map amendment with the following conditions. That the boundary also include the property to the north.
General including, so it's a general plan map amendment from a residential. Designation to an airport related designation in order to develop flex warehouse office. Located at thirty four ten West Center Street, Fort Utah.
There a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Well, we'll do a roll call and.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 A, uh. Vote is four, one. Recommending approval. Forwarding approval. We'll go ahead and read item number four, Keaton Morton. Requests a general plan map amendment from a residential designation to an airport related designation in order to develop an industrial park. Located at approximately thirty four fifty West Center Street, Fort Utah neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Ardmore.
This all might be very familiar. Um, so. I'll try to be brief as it's essentially the same request, just from a different property owner.
Should I have included these two items?
No, they're separate applications, uh, separate property owners, uh, submitted separate applications. So, so this is how we got to do it. Um, but it is the same request and it's involving the same overall master plan, uh, for the property. So here's the property, uh, proposed map amendment from residential to airport related. Uh, again, there's the, the concept that, that is associated with that. This one doesn't have any, um, suggested conditions, uh, from staff, but we recommend approval.
All right. Uh, I do have a question from staff.
There's the flight path that we've been talking about.
Okay, I haven't read the, um, the new Provo River. Uh, that whole. Changing the, oh, I'm, I'm not even going to state it right. What's it called? The Delta Restoration. I'm wondering with the slow, with the, I mean, you mentioned a reduction in water flow and to like the size of a creek. Uh, I'm wondering like how, how will that change impact, uh, the, the vegetation there? I, I, I don't know. Anyone could speak to that.
David Day, can you come up and answer that?
Yeah, Mr. Day, the, the question was, uh, with the Provo River Delta Restoration and, and. The change of the flow to, to stream size, what, to what, is there any? Are any studies or any consultants have said how it'd affect the vegetation along that, that. That portion, what a, a change would do?
Yeah, the, um, the federal government department of interiors. Uh, in charge of that, and they've done a lot of studies. They have a website that you can look at for a lot of detail. If you just type in Provo River Delta Restoration, you'll, you'll, you'll get their website, but. Do you want me to show you where the delta goes or, or just the vegetation question?
Just the, just the vegetation question.
Um, so from, uh. East of this. Uh, drawing. Um, uh, Lake Shore Drive. Well, it's right in the very corner right there. If you can see right there, yeah. The, the river, uh, will divert. Along just, it'll go straight west right there and you can kind of see the bridge. If you can kind of point to the up. No, it's right there, that white thing. That's a bridge. Uh, that's where the river will go underneath right there. That, that's all constructed now. Uh, and you can drive on it, um, if you want to look at it, but. The, the, the main flow of the river will go out that way into the north. There, the old channel will be, uh. Recontoured, uh, because it'll have about ten CFS of water, ten cubic feet per second of water going down it. And, and so they will have to make the channel a little more gradual instead of steep. So they're planning on doing that so that the water that comes down, it will still look like, uh. Sort of like a river coming down. The vegetation along the sides, um. I don't know if I've seen any study on what they think will happen to that, but there will still be water available, you know, that they. Probably not up as high on the bank. And so there, they may lose a little bit of that. I. I doubt they've looked at that very closely. But I may be wrong. Yeah, Ben, Ben's been integrally working with them, so he has probably better information.
No, what you said was perfect, but they are going to put another dam on the old section of the river down by Utah Lake State Park. And they will back up the flow to about. Where that air flight path is right about there. And so it'll only be a small stream from there on up to where the river is diverted. From there downstream, it will be. Actually more water than what we have in there right now. And they're going to put aerators and oxygenators because ten cubic feet per second isn't a whole lot. And so that's hopefully supposed to help it to keep from getting algae and nasty and stuff like that.
Yes. Yeah. So like the dam is down by the boat harbor and, and it'll back the water up like. Like Ben saying, all the way back up into here and it'll maintain it at that level. But, but east of there would be the, the area I would be worried about losing any vegetation. From that flight line. West, I think it'll be fine. Yeah.
And all of that's going to happen regardless of what this is zoned.
Yeah, that, yeah, that is all, uh, a project that we have very little. To do with, it's all part of, uh, the June sucker, uh, restoration and. Uh, part of the central Utah Water Project, so.
And, and that flight line is that, that's not the primary. Flight line, correct?
That is the secondary runway. That is, is when, uh. Conditions are such that they need to switch to that angle based on wind and such. It, that.
It's the shorter.
They don't use it very often, but they have to have that as an option. I don't know, maybe. Uh, Robert would know how often they use it. I don't know. Not very often.
Yeah, it's only about. Once or twice a month that they start flying over there with the wind. At the right direction, like you said, and sometimes they can't use the other ones. It's not very often, but. Maybe a couple of times a month.
Yeah, I'm just going to say it in the microphone. He said one or two times a month, the, the wind necess, necess, but observationally necessitates, uh. That second or secondary flight line. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh. Neighborhood, any, any other questions? Commissioners, any other questions for that, for the app? I'm sorry, for staff. Okay, uh, will the applicant, uh. The applicant here would like to make a statement? Same, yeah, okay.
Any additional question, anything that I can clarify specific to. What we've already discussed, I'd be happy to do that. I'd also don't want to waste your time, so.
Nothing? Okay, uh, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right, uh, neighborhood chair, is there, is there anything? You, you'd like to add, uh, or no? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill. Okay, any other public, members of the public would like to comment? I, I guess you can double dip. New application, new time to comment. You, you're limited to two minutes.
But I really don't have that much more, sorry. Um. I was just wanting to say that I know those are two major roads that are next to it, but. Oh, my name is Mikel Hines. Um, that area of Center Street is not a super busy road. On, uh, that far west, it's not highly trafficked, so I. I feel like that area right there fits more with the residential as it, there's a lot of residential right there already. And with how much land there is south of Center Street, I just feel like. This area is such a beautiful piece that should be utilized. For residents instead of industrial buildings and keep the industrial stuff south of Center Street. Closer to the airport. And in the report that I read that you guys received. They said that that runway was only used for small aircraft, which I wouldn't think would be too, but I guess they use it. A few times a month for the larger ones. I've never noticed it, but anyways, those are my last thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment? Yeah, we'll close a public comment. Applicant, would you like to make any clarifying statements or be good letting it? Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, any further discussion on? On this application?
And, uh, can we get the city to comment on what the resident just mentioned about moving? This sort of a project further south? Is that even an option? I mean, there's not property there for sale. There's not, I mean, that's.
So the property south is already airport industrial, uh, airport, airport related in the general plan. Um, some of it has come forward with rezone and concept plans. Other has remained agricultural. Uh, so yeah, there is, there's land south of Center Street for this use as well.
So you're saying there would not be neighborhoods south of this anyway?
Correct, yeah. It, it shouldn't develop as residential south of Center Street in this area.
Uh, is there any commissioners like to put forward a motion? Further discussion?
I propose that we forward a positive recommendation to the city council. In the request for a general map plan amendment from residential R designation. To an airport related AR designation in order to develop an industrial park located approximately. At thirty four fifty West Center Street.
There a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Let's, uh, do a vote.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 Motion passes, uh, four, one recommending approval to city council. Item number five, Provo City Development Services requests. Ordinance text amendments to. Chapters fourteen point three, four, fourteen point three, eight, fourteen point fourteen E. And fourteen point fourteen C Provo City Code to clarify standards and update codes. Uh, Mr. Citywide Application, Mr. Ardmore.
Thank you. Um, so I think maybe on this one, I'll just kind of summarize what each section is doing. Um, I do have all the, the texts through my slides if anybody wants to go to a certain section. Um, but the, so going in order, the first one is to update fence standards to match the building code. Uh, building code, international building code. Limits at seven, our city code that was at six, so we're bringing it up to seven to match. Uh, next one down is clarification of screening standards for dumpsters. That's been kind of ambiguous and. And a, a point of contention with, uh. Especially multifamily developments. Um, so we want to clarify that standard. Uh, just cross referencing the lighting standards in the sign code section for lighting signs. Uh, next one is to correct parking dimension standards. From the one family dwellings, uh, to be consistent with our parking design standards in the parking chapter. Uh, next one down is to. Move one of the conditional uses that was, um. Apparently missed when we pushed all of our conditional uses into one section of code. Uh, so we're just putting that in the conditional use, uh, chapter. Uh, then another one to comply with public work standards is where. Uh, then another one to comply with public work standards is we're updating the clear vision standard uh for corners and driveways. Uh, then uh the next couple have to do with the. CMU zone, uh, clarifying the objectives of that zone in the introduction paragraph. And then uh kind of combining and cleaning up the, how the amenity space standards were written in that zone. And then the final one is uh correction of setback standards for the HDR zone. Those standards were uh. Less strict than the CMU zone, uh, which was never the intention, um, the CMU zone was supposed to offer. More density and and lighter setbacks, uh, so we're correcting that in the HDR zone. Uh, but again, I can go to any of these if you'd like on the slides, uh, or if you have any questions about any of them.
Uh, yeah, with the trash enclosures, it goes from not being visible to being screened. It, I I mean, I I guess what it's saying, uh. But like, like a a fence with slats in it would, or there is little visual gap.
Yeah, so the requirement um was, has always been to to do enclosure that's architecturally compatible with the building. Uh, with a a gate, a fence uh in front um for for the trucks to pick them up. Um, that was always the intention, that was always kind of how it was interpreted by staff. Um, there's been some complication over the language of not being visible. Um, that can prove problematic on a a site that uses the whole parcel for a building, where do you put the trash? It's it's gonna be visible from some point from the street, but it's it's the main thing is screening that from the site.
Thank you. Anyone else have any? Commissioners, any questions for the? Staff?
Thank you.
Right, um. Right, we'll open this up to public comment. Uh, please come up and state your name and residence. You'll be limited to two minutes. Anyone from the public like to make a comment on this application? Okay, seeing none, we will. Close comment. Commissioners, any discussion on the the application?
Pretty, pretty minimal changes, great at clarifying the uses and intents, I don't, I don't think there's any problem here.
All right, can we, is there any motions, anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that uh. We send a positive recommendation for Provo City Development Services Ordinance Text Amendment to chapters thirteen point three four. Fourteen point three eight, fourteen point fourteen E and fourteen point fourteen C Provo City Code to clarify standards and update. Codes.
There a second on the motion?
I'll second.
All right, we will have a roll, vote by roll call, uh. Aye?
Aye.
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 Uh, motion passes uh five one. I'm sorry, five zero. Uh, recommending for a recommendation of approval to. City Council, um. Item number six, Development Services requests a complete. Real quick before we go on to the next one, does anyone, do any commissioners need a break or anything, like a five-minute break, okay? All right, item number six, Development Services requests a complete revision of the Provo General Plan. To guide growth and development for the next ten to twenty years in Provo, Citywide Application, uh, Mr. Larson.
All right, glad to be here with you today, commissioners and. Just talk about the uh work we've done on the general plan, um. Just pulling up a document or two here for me. So we talked a little bit about this with you in the, in the last session, gave you a kind of a. More in-depth. Um, explanation of this and kind of where we've been at, I'll probably go a little shorter and let, give you more time to ask questions on this one. See if I can get this working, there we go, so, um. This came to the Planning Commission about a year ago, um. I think it was actually almost a year ago today that this came to you for a recommendation, or at least the the general plan did. In a much different form than it is now, um, we. You you gave a positive recommendation on that uh December twenty-first, December twenty twenty-one version. And then I went to the City Council, uh, we took it there and went through quite a process of presenting it to them. And then, um. As we were going through that process, staff and and the administration asked uh for the ability to. Do a, uh, have a a survey conducted, a scientific survey to make sure that we had heard the public. Out of equip adequately, that we got the the adequately and correctly heard the voice of the of the citizens on. On these important issues related to the general plan, so um, we uh actually, that that's how it went. We we stopped the adoption process, or the adoption process was stopped and then we began working with a con- a consultant Y two analytics. And they prepared a really um amazing, uh, prepared an amazing survey for us, we sent it out to the the residents. Uh, of course, it's a scientific survey, so we were not aiming to send it to everybody in the city, we were looking for a sample, sample size sufficient. To uh to ensure that it, that the results would be um scientifically valid and and representative of the city. Ended up getting nine hundred responses, which was enough to even break down the data. Student versus non-student council dis- uh by council district, so we got a quite a a great uh set of data. And going through there, uh, going through that process, um. It confirmed some things, um, that, you know, the city is interested in seeing uh issues like uh. Traffic congestion's uh important to the city according to the the survey. Uh, a mix of housing types is huge to 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 the people of this city. Um, mix of housing types and and uh mix of housing at a different price points. And we were, uh, the the survey confirmed that environment. The that sustainability is important to the residents and uh. Uh, air quality and so forth is is a big thing to to our citizens. Um, family friendliness, those those types of things, um, we got a lot of data. Lot of data that told us what their preferences were for traveling through the city, whether it be walking or. You know, driving a car and so it, and and how many, what type of, how long they would desire to go. And how how long they want, they were willing to go. Walking versus in a car to to get services versus entertainment and so forth, so we went through quite a process to do that. And uh after we prepare, after we heard from uh heard back on that survey, we went and redrafted the general plan. Based on that and some other things that staff was concerned about, told you that uh we had some concerns about the uh future land use map. That was part of the the uh twenty twenty-one general plan, took that out and and redid that. Um, so we re- redrafted the general plan, made some updates to it and then took it uh to the. Took it to the, um. Took it to the department heads and had them review it and also took it through what uh we call it the city, the CRC Coordinator's Review Committee. That's just a group of project reviewers. After that, we we took it to the uh, the mayor's office and had them review the general plan and and uh. It was about after that time that uh. The uh city attorney's office has been quite involved in these discussions as well, said that we should take it back to you because the document. Uh, he recommended we consider doing that because the the document had changed significantly. So we're back here for your recommendation as per the state code and um just wanna give you a little bit of a. And uh you and the the public an update on what's uh where we're at with this plan, where, what's staying the same, what's different? So uh what's staying the same is a vision statement for this document i- is the same. Now, could you pull up the uh, that uh? Pull up the general plan and can you scroll down to go about to page ten and let's see if we're. Where that takes us, go up a little bit. Just a little, a page or two. Couple more pages. Um, I'm sorry, wrong way, let's, let's go down the other way, I thought it was up above there, so. There's the vision statement, uh, so that vision statement that you see right there is the same that was, that's the same vision statement. That was in the document you uh, you recommended approval for, so that's not changing. It's uh Provost, uh, you know, talks about being an economic center and uh full of that economic op- or educational opportunities. Broad range of housing types and and so forth, but that that hasn't changed, we go back to the slides. Um, the graphics, you kind of saw a little bit of a, a little of the graph, a little bit of the graphics, we still think the the. The document we're providing to you gives a, has a fresh look, the old one did too, um. Document's still fairly slim, not as slim as the old one, and that's kind of part of one of our cons- that's one of our major concerns with that last document. Is it seemed like some of the key issues in that document were treated so lightly that it made staff concerned that there, there wasn't sufficient. Sufficient depth in uh the discussion of some of the topics that it that would, that it would give us sufficient. Policies to to really analyze the documents uh and give you. Uh, sufficient a- uh analysis to to the 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 type of analysis we're used to giving you. We've got a current general plan that's pretty heavy, isn't very graphically appealing, but it is heavy on content and. So we were a little worried on, on, on the one that we, that was brought to you a year ago. So the the, this new document's gonna be a little thicker and we've, we've treated some of the uh, the um. Documents or touched on some of the t- the topics a little more deeply, but the the document still has clear commitments at the e- at the start of each. Chapter, um, a clear commitment from the city to the citizens. Um, now, could you go back up to, go back to that plan? I'll give you example, um, could you go up a few pages, I think this introduction has a a commitment in it, go up uh maybe. To page six and let's see where that goes. Go uh to seven. Okay, um, can you go back up there just a little bit? Okay, try page third, uh, try page fourteen. And down a little bit more. Just, there we go, so each one of these chapters starts out with a commitment like this, we fully embrace our joint stewardship of our community. And our heritage and our future, each each one of these chapters starts out just like this. Um, simple statement, kind of a, what 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 we commit to to do as as citizens and what our city commits to do for its citizens. All right, back to the slides. Still, um, this this document still values the sense of belonging, we want people to feel valued and welcome in Provo. We want them to know that we value our natural resources, we've heard strongly in the Y two survey that people value the outdoors and. Access to them significantly, cities really uh has has some really good uh alternative transportation. Uh, facilities, we've got a a a. The frontrunner station, we've got some really good bike lanes and uh, and so we want to continue to value those. And we still, and one of the things, as I mentioned in the works in the study session, is each one of these chapters that we look at has. Has uh goals at the end to make sure that we incorporate all of these, these uh. Um, incorporate and implement uh the, the, you know, im- implement and uh the. The uh, so we have an action plan to put into 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 practice what what we're, what is discussed in each one of those chapters, so. Um, again, what's different is we we did, we will treat some the tr- uh doc, some subjects like. Land use, transportational more deeply, housing and. Going back, we reordered the chapters. We felt that some, if you went back and looked at the old document, you would find that. Growing together was one of the chapters and that was a combination of city history and land use, you had. Um, another document, another chapter that combined public service with. With um belonging and equity, another chapter that combined economics with housing. And so they they grouped all of these topics together in one chapter. A- and they, I thought they were kind of awkward frankly, and and we thought, hey, let's, let's get in there and like, let's have a separate chapter for land use. Separate one for housing, separate one for, um. A separate one for the uh, for economics and so forth, so we reordered those. And uh went and went into uh, again, into a little more depth of of the topics. I went through the chapters with you already, um. I I kind of gave you an explanation of those chapters, we also told you that we have four appendices. Um, uh, the engage, the engagement section, community engagement talks about uh. Kind of the process we went through to get feedback on the general plan, uh, we. Um, included the Y two survey results in there and and also let people know that they're, they're welcome, there were some other. Unscientific surveys that were conducted and we have results for those as well, that the public are welcome to see. We just uh for sake of brevity didn't include them, also have the moderate income housing report element. That was required by the state to be in there, housing's such a huge issue and. Um, really glad that the housing's chapter is, has its own, or that there is a separate housing chapter. And uh we feel like that's really going to establish some excellent policies for helping, like like I said earlier. One of the big issues that the citizens are concerned about is a mix of housing types and affordability and so. Um, and and having housing at different prices, price points, so it's excellent to have, it's a a separate housing chapter. Along with that, that appendix be that moderate income housing element, which particularly helps uh. The group of citizens that that fit in that income bracket of, of basically making forty-nine. Forty-nine percent, fifty percent to seventy-nine percent. Um, of this, the area AMI, area median income, which is eighty-three thousand, so. Um, we specific, we have a basically twenty-page plan that that touches on that issue. On on uh providing housing for that that group that's uh. The, we're, we're talking, when I'm talking about modern income people, I'm talking about teachers, police officers. You know, firefighters, those kinds of people that we we have a specific plan to help these people have housing because uh frankly, it, we we know. We know the challenges with housing, that the for affordability and access and so forth, so. Um, the other thing that uh we have in there, an append- appendix C uh deals with some, with. Gives us guidelines on annexations and then appendix D, as I noted, we have redone the general, we have updated the. The uh general plan map, the general plan map, I'm gonna go to that because I didn't show you that much earlier in the day. Um, that is the general plan map, it has a. Kind of going down halfway through the middle of that legend there, has land use designations and each one, every. Pretty much every bit of the property in the city has some type of land use designation. It it establishes what kind of a plan, what what the city wants, what type of general use the city wants to see on that property. And it kind of sets the groundwork for zoning. Again, we we uh. Updated this after, you know, that we we had some help with the last general plan version that you saw. With the consultant, we took that document along with the one that the consultant prepared, along with the one that, and then. Of course, evaluated the current one and and prepared this and feel like it's a, it's a really big improvement. We highlight, uh, you can see, um. You can see these gateways, we identify gateways on the uh, on this map. Those are areas where we want to spruce up entries into the city, um. So we identify those those areas should have a gateway plan, have one underway, working to to have a set of design standards to help beautify these areas. But you can, we we just felt that there was a big need to reevaluate the land use designation. Staff went through and and prepared this map and feel like it's very thorough and really really thorough and and realistic view of of how land use should be conducted in the city. So with that, I'll I'll, I guess I'll just leave it at that, reminding you again, a general plan isn't a, it isn't a city code. It's not a, it's not a set of requirements. This is an advisory document. It's a set of policies to guide land use decisions in the city. And so you know, we're not, we're not talking about requirements. It is just it it's land use policy for the city. So with that, I'll turn the time over to you for questions and now could you get the PDF up of the general plan?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Were the neighborhood plans ever in the general plan?
They were not. The general plan is a higher looking, higher view plan. And it the the we reference the current general plan does talk about some neighborhood level policies, but the idea with this update is to not do that. We we want to go through and have a neighborhood plan for every neighborhood. And we've got we have several neighborhood plans on the several several neighborhood plans that have been done. We just got the Southwest Plan adopted just last month. So it's we we've taken neighborhood policies out. We're not including them here with the idea that we're going to continue to to really drill down in those neighborhood plans.
And so where will those exist? What documents?
There'll be appendices.
There'll be appendices.
To this document. Yeah, exactly.
Brandon, you said something and commented about that there had been over nine hundred responses.
Yeah.
How did they collect these? Did they do it by mail? Did they send it out to each resident or did they do it by phone in or how did they collect this data?
Again, they were weren't looking for to send it out to every citizen. They were looking for representative samples. So they were were looking roughly for about four hundred, a sample size of four hundred. They send it out and by email. They sent it out by email with a with the access code. You could only get into it one time. You couldn't go back and you couldn't transfer it to somebody else. It was just sent out. What we did was we gave our consultant. We we got contact data and gave it to our to our consultant and they randomly gave it out to to citizens in the city. They there there was likely effort to to hit certain areas to make sure they that they hit sufficiently.
That's what I was wondering if they did. They do a broad.
Yes.
So they pick all levels, all our neighborhoods, all.
Exactly. Part of the reason we got to nine hundred, we were only looking for four hundred because that would have been sufficient for the survey. But they were having a really hard time getting sufficient responses in district council district two. So they just kept sending out responses until we had sufficient numbers there. So we had two hundred responses in each council district. And there that district was was really hard to get. So we that one was a little less.
Do you want? I just noticed a couple of things that I didn't really understand.
Yeah.
In the appendix appendix from from the input.
Yeah.
So there was one, do you want questions on that? Or do you want to, you know, are you asking us to also help sift through and make sure this is this document's? You know, understandable and everything.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take your definitely take your feedback and the appendices are definitely part of it. So if you have things that don't make sense, please, please ask questions.
Okay, so on the public engagement summary, number thirteen, question thirteen says, thinking about planning for the future of Provo and the aspects of the community you live in, how important are each of the following potential priorities to you personally? But then the responses don't seem to match that. Excellent, good, average, poor, terrible. I'm not sure the question and the responses match. Does that make sense?
Let me diving into that one. So appendix, so we're, I guess, to be quite frank with appendix A. If you're looking at specific questions, those came right from the survey that's already been administered and we've received responses on. So that.
Okay, I just wonder if if there's a typo somewhere or if the question wasn't exactly worded that way.
So it's thirteen.
Thirteen, question thirteen. Yeah, because if you if you asked, how important are each of the following potential priorities to you personally? And the options are excellent, good, average, poor, terrible. It doesn't match. It's.
It like it should say very important.
Right, because if you look at the other questions.
More important.
Yes.
Neutral.
Right.
Right. So I'm not sure if the question was the
Yeah, we may have.
Question for that those responses or not, which makes a difference because what was I asked? You know, what were they asked? That's one of them.
Yeah, I'll I'll look at that because I'm, yeah.
It may just be a typo.
It may be that we put in the wrong answers to that question.
The other one is on question twenty nine and thirty are the exact same question. However, the responses are different.
Yep. Let's take a look here.
As you can tell, I read the whole document. But that that didn't make sense to me that twenty nine and thirty are the exact same question and the responses are different from the same groups of people. So that's just another.
Right, I will look at those. I'm not, wish I had the survey in front of me.
That's okay, just so you can follow up on that and.
I will follow up on that. I'm not sure what the why those are. Okay, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
My other question is on the annexation policy map.
Yep.
Tell me about area three.
Okay.
But is, I mean, that's the lake, isn't it?
Oh, I see. I had the same question. Yeah. Now, do you have a way to pull that up? If you go to the general, go to our department page?
I guess what I guess basically you're just saying that it's only that little section that is usable, right? The
It is, but it.
East end of it.
That one's an interesting one. The I wondered why it was there. It is the it's supposed to to coincide with the desired boundary of the city. There's also, if you read in there, it talks about the potential for this may have been in the last general plan, but it talks about that potentially along in connection with the CUP project actually draining Provo Bay, which we definitely would not want, definitely don't want to see that happen, but I think that was set up so that if there there was that instance that that that's was my conclusion because I drove dove into that same question, like what is going on here?
Wondered why that would, the lake portion of that would be included.
Right. And I think when I started looking at the old general plan, it talked about the possibility in relation in in connection with the CUP project, Central Utah Water Project, draining Provo Bay. And so and in fact, when I started doing, working on that general plan, I found that there were actually some. So appendix C. So I found that there actually are some home builders that own property in in Provo Bay. And so there maybe there was some knowledge that there was some discussion. Could you go down about five pages? Let's see. Yeah, there we go. Actually stop right there. Go back up to the map. So there's there is three right there. Can you go just up a bit or go down just a bit? I'm sorry. Wrong direction. There we go. So there's there's three. You can see that over in this area is where see if I don't poke or shoot that someone's eyes, but right there. I I I noticed that some of that land is owned by home, home, home builders or people who'd be interested in developers. So and then if you go down, I don't think, can you go down a page or two to go to three? I don't think it says it here because I think we took it out. Go to area three. So you have to go up a little bit. So the old general plan talks and we took it out here, but it talked about the possibility of that that being drained and being developed. And so that I think that may be why area three is like that. So.
And the last question you had mentioned about the property that was annexed on the east. Essentially for a ski resort at some point. Tell me why that would.
Can you go down to the last, keep going, keep going. One more. There you go. There's the annexation or the de-annexation. So so this was, you can read it right there, but there was an annexation in seventy eight. The idea was that there there was some idea of having a ski resort in that area. Ultimately, that plan was abandoned. And so that land's just set, you know, set out there as part of Provo, but really nothing's ever been done with it and there is no plan to ever develop that land. And your question again on this was.
Just, I mean, it says that the environmental, it was the federal government that said they denied the permit based on an environmental impact statement.
Yeah.
So that that's probably never a potential because
Yeah.
Or could that change?
Exactly. It's it's been a plan for de-annexation forever. That's something we could explore a little more, but right now it's just kind of a plan. So. Yeah.
I had one comment. I was debating whether to bring it up because I this this draft general plan is it's a it's awesome. I think it's it has a lot of things. I I think I was wondering if in the resource management section, maybe or or another section, there might be at least at least one reference to wetlands. I I know one one section talked about education, about educational programs about local wetlands, but but perhaps in in resource. Just just having at least a one word reference to to wetlands protection in there. So it's not it's not lost that that we're, it it is part of our plan to consider wetlands protection, mitigation, going through Army Corps of engineers.
That's a really good idea. Actually, I see your point. We can add that there or to the the yeah, I think resource management might be a really good spot for a reference to that.
Yeah, maybe under the water use for use and storage. I'm not sure where it might best fit or critical topics for special consideration. Like on page seventy eight, seventy nine. This is a this is an awesome improvement and it's we need it.
Yeah.
It's I'm excited about it. See how you know, guides development in the future.
Somewhere in there, it talked about the fact that DC have to be redone every ten to twenty years.
Yeah.
But is this a fluid thing? Is it something that we would be changing yearly, looking at yearly? It seems like things, but it seems like things change so quickly, like housing need for certain types of housing and different things. It seems like if you leave it for twenty years, you're going to be so outdated.
Yeah.
People are going to read it and think, what are these people talking about?
Yeah, no, you're you're absolutely right. General general plans are continuously amended for any number of reasons and factors. So no, it's not something that's so perfect that we should never change it. The other thing is is that the general plan section of the ordinance, which is in title fifteen, says it's supposed to be updated every five years, which is a major undertaking for the staff, but it's supposed to be updated every five years. So no, this isn't something that we just put on the shelf for ten years or twenty years. No. Thank you. I was about to mention that five year thing and and the fact that we we constantly have land use applications that come in that that causes to look at that. I mean, we, like I mentioned earlier.
Like like tonight was a
Yeah.
general plan.
Exactly. We 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 had one of those tonight and it causes us to look at our land use designations and see if we've got it right. We're always, every time we bring a staff report to you, we're reviewing those policies and and and, you know, sometimes we see, wow, that wow, it's we need to look at that again. And then and then state also gets involved. You know, like with that modern income housing element, the state's really pushing hard for us to to for us and the rest of the city to be very proactive. I think the city is already trying to be proactive on, you know, making sure we have adequate housing here in the city. But the state's definitely helpful in in pointing us out, pointing to us certain things that we really need to be working on. And so, yeah, there's there's so many influences involved in the in the planning process that there's no way this document would ever stay stay stagnant. So. In fact, might I add, this one was the current plan was adopted in twenty in two thousand and four. But there was a major update in twenty seventeen. And I know that there believe there was other things done in between that time. I mean, major things, but so, I mean, the the document's not going to stay stagnant, that's for sure. So even within the last five years or so, we've done a major update to the general plan.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Sal.
Overall, I think it's a fantastic document and I know you've been at it, like you said, for a year. There's great, great information here. In my reading of it, the only intention is not even the right word. The only concern I have is some of the great things that are mentioned here could really, I don't see where they they don't get pushed into the implementation matrix because they really aren't an implementation level. I think you're calling them launches in the implementation matrix. There are things like, I'll just read a couple as an example. Future developers, residents and policymakers should consider the balance of roof shops and services with the preservation of agricultural lands. That policy is great. The concept is great. How is it executed? How do we signal to developers? These are ways to do that. There's a desire to see neighborhood scale retail development. That's great as a broad policy objective and and I'm probably just lamenting that we can't do more really, and this isn't the place to do it, maybe, unless it was, you know, adding more appendices to it. But just to applaud the work and wish there were ways that we could show concrete examples of how those could be done. Another one in here is, I know, talking about ADUs and and Provo has been proactive about some of this already. I know that. You know, maybe like giving examples of ADU plans that could be used and 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 people could, you know, have permitted easily, just examples like that. So really, it's just, again, overwhelmingly support for the document and the great work that's been done and hope that there's ways that we can, you know, execute on this more beyond because I I'm not sure that the implementation side has all of that there. And I know we have area plans and neighborhood plans and things to do that, but there might need to just be more examples, more more signposts and indicators for developers and.
The the thing that I I think, yeah, I understand and it's hard. I mean, our our and you you've seen the the implementation matrix. It's pretty robust.
Yeah.
And we we didn't capture every single suggestion in there. It wasn't included in the implementation matrix. However, those things are still there to consider and to guide. You know, when a land use application comes in, we those items are still considered when when we evaluate that land use applications and and it's going to be a document that will be the that the city will consult and 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 guide the land use guide land use decisions for for the next several years. So.
Yeah, I understand. I guess I'm thinking also, you know, new developments or development activity in my neighborhood. And I see things that I don't think are consistent with this, like the way that they water mow strips and things that just you know, I I don't think are consistent with what we're trying to do here. And so again, it's just more hope that the great work that Development Service is able to do will be able to continue to get this out there. So.
There's so many things going on behind the scenes too, like even with like the landscape and mow strip thing. We've I just had a coworker in the last three weeks go to a in the last three weeks go to a three day workshop to work on that. And uh she's been working diligently on um working with an organization. We're going to get a code audit on on that issue. And uh so there there we've got a gateways plan. We've got a a plan that's being started. We've got a plan for the lakes and rivers, plan for the foothills and canyons. There there are so many plans and efforts the city is undertaking to drill down on some of these topics.
Yeah.
So I I'm actually pretty impressed with how how much the city's trying to do to to make sure that we're really drilling down on these important issues.
Outstanding.
All right, thank you. Uh. Larson, uh. With that, we'll open this up for public comment. Love to hear from members of the public. Please come up and state your name and your residence and I'm you two through two two minutes.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Um, the general plan, the draft that's on the website?
I'm sorry, can you state your name?
Yeah, sorry. Kat Linford. Provo resident. Um, my question is, the draft plan that is on the website, is that what you are going over? But you're saying that you're making changes to it.
There there is the current general plan that's in place now that's guy already guiding the policies of the city. But we also have online this proposed update.
But the proposed, that's what I'm asking, is the proposed update is what you just presented and what everybody was looking at. Okay, that's what I I just needed to clarify. Can I start my time over?
Yeah, all of us, I just declare, we we all received copies of the the draft plan and and reviewed it.
Right, was it a redline version? No, that's.
No, it's the same version that that he's presented. It's the same version that was provided to the public.
That's been on the website for a year.
The link to the.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
No, that uh document is posted online. It should be. The if you're the city.
The city removed that plan a couple about a week ago when we went to uh um when we were finished redrafting this, we took down that. Uh, I watched my watched my coworker take it down, and we had her upload those those plans there. The two or three weeks ago, you would have seen the old plan that they saw a year ago. But that's that's the page. I know that there was a resident who was concerned about this and was telling people to go to an old uh to an old version, an eighty percent draft of la- last year's general plan, and that's not what we're talking about here today. That that document's been replaced. So.
Thanks.
So just a comment on that. It's hard to make public comment on something that's outdated. So with that said, um. Couple of things that I want to bring to your attention. He Brandon brought up a whole bunch that um public engagement was critical in coming up with this plan. Um, although although the cities followed the process and checked the box that public comment and public engagement was followed. Um, it's hard not to believe that the results were skewed by a student population, most of which hadn't lived in Provo for more than five years, nor did they plan to stay in Provo more than five to ten years. So of the nine hundred and seventy, nine hundred and seventy one respondents, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's a very hefty percentage that was student driven, not not aged driven, not somebody who's been here for forty two years of my life, not somebody that's been here for seventy five years of their life, but for somebody who's been here for less than a year or less than five years. So they're dictating a plan for ten to twenty years for us who plan to stay here forever. Um, public engagement is tricky. I understand that. But I think um it it's shocked us to hear that you were only expecting or needing to get four hundred results. We live in a city of a hundred and fifteen thousand people, and you're basing this plan off of nine hundred and seventy results respondents. Uh, my second point um would be the general plan points to a transportation master plan within it. The general plan kind of just frosts the top of of these other items, which I understand. Um, but the the T M P is outdated. Uh, according to municipal council members, it does not align with how they envision our neighborhoods and how Provo should look. Uh, the the plan wants to destroy neighborhoods and uproot single family homes for roadways. Um, it's the extreme opposite of the city motto, welcome home. I and this group here will be directly impacted. We will lose our homes if the transportation master plan is goes forward as planned. Um, referring to the most recent tragedy um in the death of Isabel Parr, who was recently killed on eight hundred north. Um. No matter what is found during the investigation, you can't deny that eight hundred north, eight twenty north, the speed limit is twenty five miles per hour. I'm not an expert in this, but I don't know if speed was a factor, but I've if she was hit at twenty five miles per hour, might have been a different result. I would just ask you to consider those and that we are human, we are people, families that live in these single family homes. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Jackson. I'm also a Provo resident. I also live on eight twenty north. And um I have two kids in college who uh bike and walk from our home to their university on that road. I have um a cousin that lives four streets down and another cousin that lives four blocks away. And I question whether or not we need another major artery in through Provo City. Is that necessary when it's center street, we have another major road that gets to the freeway? What is it that that is adding to um the living experience, welcome home, like Kat mentioned? Um, I I see kids every day walking and biking along that bike trail. Um, and this young woman uh who lost her life just there. I walk my own dog right there. Uh, this is um. As I look around and I've had opportunities to live uh in major cities all over the world, I've lived on five different continents. I choose to be here in Provo when I'm in the United States. And I don't choose Orem, and I don't choose Springville, and I I would prefer a bikeable city, a walkable city, a neighborhood city. Of course, arteries have to connect major parts of the city, but is it so necessary to focus on convenience and speed and auto traffic as opposed to the experience of living and walking and enjoying the city that we live in? And so I again uh just encourage you to consider that transportation master plan and what it does to normal residents experience in the in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, please come up. It's all yours.
Um, so my name is Margaret Hernandez, who lives in Provo, right on eight twenty north. Um, all these are my neighbors. Um, and so just kind of thinking about um what you guys have been talking about and the things, you know, our surroundings. Um, I know I understand um your guys' motto and the general plan and making Provo feel like home. But if you really take into account what makes Provo seem like home, you know, I would take all those things into account, you know, like my neighbor just said. Um, you know, neighborhood, roadways, like, you know, just the schools and just feeling at home, you know. You were talking about not just us, I mean, I'm like a newer, um, I I, you know, I've been there for almost fourteen, fifteen years. And and just, you know, thinking about people, you know, my neighbors who have been there, you know, twenty, thirty, I don't know how many years. And so if you look, you know, I understand there's, you know, you know, this transportation plan in place in the general plan. Important to have all these things directly, you know, to hospital and all these others, you know, center street, a lot of things are going around. Um, when I used to visit Provo, maybe um before I even moved here, um, probably more than twenty years ago, I know, you know, with the new generations, I understand there has to be changes. But I think we should really consider just the quality of life and how Provo is right now. I'm in that strip. Um, you know, with families who have been their generations, you know, we have elderly people. We have, you know, just a lot of things just to consider. I'm not sure if I'm really getting my point across. I get really nervous when it comes to these type of things. But I think it's just my point is, is just really consider the quality of life. Um, if you were to make a plan like that, um, and I think there is really no need for like a new roadway, maybe, and anything, just enchant it. Enchas what what, you know, enchas the area, maybe have more lights along the roadway, you know, to have, you know, more, I guess, uh, more safety in that kind of sense. Um, just enhance everything, you know, make quality of life better, make Provo feel like home instead of changing it, you know, at least in that area. I think I kind of said it right. All right. Thank you, guys.
My name's Mary Ann Anderson, and I'm a Provo resident. I also live on eight twenty north. And if this master transportation plan is implemented, I will lose my home. We've been there forty two years. We're mortgage free. Our children were all raised there. We don't want to lose our home. We don't feel like widening a road to make it more accessible for strangers and people coming in for doctor's appointments, hospital, whatever is in the best interest of the Provo city citizens. Um, I think we need to focus on keeping our neighborhoods intact. Um, neighborhood camaraderie, neighborhood love and fellowship and friendship. And that would destroy about forty homes if if that the master plan in this new in this is implemented. It's it would be tragic for a lot of people. Uh, we live on the river because we choose to live on the river. We don't live on the eight twenty north because we choose eight twenty north. We chose the river when we moved there. We enjoy all sorts of wildlife in our backyard. We have snakes and and which are fine, but we also have minks and raccoons and ducks, and they visit our home, our backyard regularly. And my grandchildren delight in that. Um, we've got a currently, we have a little mink that has taken up residence, and he is keeping the rodents at bay, and it's we don't, I don't believe we need to widen that and put another walkway on on the other side of the river. We have it on the, we have it on the south side. We don't need it on, we don't need it on both sides. The plan is to put a new parkway where our homes are, and I don't know that parks are more important than people. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ben Linford. Um, I'm Kat. So I get emotional with this because this is my life. This is our home. And I hate to be a crybaby, but it's in my time of life. I don't want to start over either, and I choose the river myself. I love it there. I didn't buy there twenty five years ago to say, I want to be on eight twenty north at Artery. I love it here. I want the river. That's why I'm there. That's why the whole neighborhood's there. The city would make you think that the river's not important to us neighborhood, but it's very important to them. And it has finally come out that, yes, they want another park. I'm like, another park to take our homes, and we've got seven parks within walking distance. And they want to make a hundred and twenty foot road. University Avenue is only eighty foot from curb to curb. And we're going to have a freeway. We've got people fifty miles an hour right now, and they're worried about taking this curve out of the of the bridge. That is a speed reducer. People, if they don't go to that, they're going to go right off in the river. Third South is the same thing. It's a straightaway. What does it make you want to do? Go fast. One of the council members of the other meeting said the same thing, lives over there. It makes you want to speed. It's our neighborhood. It's River Grove neighborhood. I've been there for twenty five years plus. She's been there her whole life. We don't want to lose our home for another park that is not needed. Like we've dealt with the the mayor, and we've been to every meeting. We're going to be to every meeting. We're going to be the craw in your side. But they don't need another park. They need to be imaginative, and they need to work this around the neighborhood and be imaginative. They can do things. Look around the world what they're doing. They're big cities, places that only have two lane highways that are funneling thousands and thousands of cars, but yet we've got to have a five lane road right down the artery for BYU and the hospital, and that is basically what it's for. We've dealt in this big time, and I just would hope that you guys would look at this because this blankening of this plan and you approving it basically is our ruining of what we've got, and I think it really needs to have a real look at this plan because it's more than just, there's devil in detail. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linford.
My name is Kelly Erickson, and I'm also living on the neighborhood off of eight twenty north, and we've been there for many, many, many years. I don't understand the need to widen that road if the objective is to increase accessibility to BYU or to the hospital. I I would like to see the numbers to justify, excuse me, why that is the reason that we need to widen that road, especially given the fact that Provo has spent so much money to encourage public transportation. To widen that road encourages more traffic to where? To a city that is priding itself on trying to improve its public transportation. So even setting aside that very important point that it disrupts a family neighborhood community to encourage commuter traffic. I I don't understand the need for the expense to encourage something that ultimately we're trying to reverse, which is increased pollution with air tur- increased air pollution with increased traffic. Um. Undermining the efforts to improve public transportation and then ultimately really destroying and losing a community and a neighborhood. Thank you.
Yeah. I think all but one or two people have from the public have been able to comment. I I don't want to short, I don't want to skip anyone. So if there's anyone else from the public that wants to make a comment. Please.
Hello, I'm Aaron Scavland. I'm the neighborhood chair of the River Grove neighborhood, and these are my neighbors uh to the south of me. Um, we understand that the general plan doesn't speak directly to this issue, that it simply references the uh transportation master plan. Um, and uh these folks and other folks will be showing up to talk to the council directly, um, because that is the body that has the ability to amend the transportation master plan. Um, I haven't let read the, I was, I was very involved in the providing feedback for the general plan early on in the process. I haven't had a chance to read it lately, but I hope it um uh has maintained some of the 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 values that were expressed in earlier drafts. Um, but I hope you as a as a body, as the planning commission, will communicate that you heard from a number of residents uh from this neighborhood uh about their concerns about um the this road being widened um and that you will communicate their concerns. Um, and that you will communicate their concerns to the council. Um, but this is not just about, uh, this neighborhood, has been, as, as has been expressed. This is about Provo more widely, what we want Provo to be. Um, do we want it to be like every other, uh, city in Utah County? Or do we want it to, you know, maintain, um, its, its, um, unique qualities of, of being the most urban place in the city? Uh, being a place that, that encourages, you know, walkability and bikeability. Um, and, and maintains that, uh, character. Um, and this would essentially be an extension of, of I fifteen through the heart of our city. And would, would not only devastate this neighborhood, but would also flood our, uh, city more widely with, 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 uh, more cars and more demands for, uh, parking and, and air pollution. So, um, I hope you all communicate these concerns, uh, because as has been said, uh, we are going to continue to, uh, raise these and, and fight this, uh, because it's, it's a fight worth fighting, not just for our neighborhood, but for the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scabland. Alright, with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and close public comment. We do appreciate you guys, uh, taking the time to, I, I, it's kind of tough when it's the last item on the agenda, so I appreciate your, your patience and your sacrifice of time, it's, it's not, um, I wish more citizens would be involved in uh, it for, for us, I, I think I could speak a little commission, we really value your input and take it to heart. Uh, Mr. Pepperoni.
So as Mr. Scabland suggested, uh, the issue, uh, to eight twenty north is in the transportation master plan, it's not in the general plan. Um, as Mr. Scabland suggested, the appropriate action would be that for them to ask the city council to amend that document. Um, the report of action, uh, will reflect that we received neighborhood input, um, on, on this issue. So whether or not the planning commission can, continues to debate that issue, it will be in the report of action, it will be represented, uh, Aaron, and will refer to people by name. Thank you.
Bill, can I ask, is this, is the transportation master plan an appendix to this document?
Yes.
So if we approve this document, are we also approving that appendix? No?
No, because that's already been approved by the city council, and so if this never gets adopted, the transportation master plan is still there.
Okay, so what we are deciding tonight has no bearing on that transportation master plan at all?
That's right, because if you look in the transportation section, there's nothing in that chapter specific to eight hundred north or eight twenty north.
Just to note, that was, it was approved in two thousand twenty, um, the transportation master planet, that's what I have, I'm, I'm looking at it. Or amended in twenty twenty. Mr. Sal?
The only comment I have is, uh, I mean, like you, I really appreciate, uh, concerned community members coming, sharing their thoughts. As I've read this draft version, uh, obviously there's competing priorities, I'm enthused by the fact that we've got as primary priorities in here, the need to strive to create a safe, robust system of local and regional transportation alternatives, including rail, bus, biking, walking options. I mean, there's some really great, there's great language in here that I hope, uh, covers some of these concerns. Now, the degree to which it touches the transportation master plan, I realize that's outside of the purview of this discussion. And, uh, fully expect that there'll be more, you know, public participation in the process to, to get that figured out, you know? Find that right balance, so.
Yeah, this is, so this is our time as commissioners to discuss, I, uh, in our, in our meeting earlier this evening, the uh, the study session we had, we discussed, uh, transportation was one of the most popular topics uh, in, in this survey. And, and to speak to whether, like, the, the, and the number of students that, from, from what I gather in the, in the appendix, it was around twenty-two, twenty-three percent of the respondents were students. Um, but yeah, I understand the concern for, like, to what degree did they, they weigh in on? And, and yeah, should they, I'm, I've lived in, I was born and raised in Provo, went to high school here. I moved away, I came back, I share, I, I live for, in Provo for the same reason you guys all do, I love it. Um, yeah, people complain about transportation and I think Provo is one of the easiest cities to get around. And, and so I, like, why another, I, I understand that concern, like, why another major artery, like, we're not Orem, we're not, we're not. We have pretty good access and, and we can do it safely, and, and I think about those, uh, two biggest instruments, incidents that come to my mind this year were the two children. And then this most recent one, right? So, so yeah, we're, we share those same concerns as you do. Um, that being said, uh, this, this general, uh, plan, that's, or it's before the, the commission today. Um, it doesn't speak directly to eight twenty north, eight hundred north. Uh, it, it, it does it in an indirect way, because it makes reference to the, the twenty twenty, uh, transportation master plan. So I have a hard, I have a hard time, um, making an objection to not recommending approval based on that. There are provisions in our, in our general plan, and this, this comes up very frequently in our, in our, in, in all the re-zones and, and all the, you know, when things go from residential to commercial or industrial. It always comes up, like, what's, how's traffic going to be, how's it going to impact the neighborhood? What, what safety concerns do we have, are there ways to, to reduce it? Public Works includes that as part of their review. And it's part of, they, they try and do traffic control devices, like you said, like a, a curve in a lane. It, it's a natural speed reducer. I, I share all, all the same concerns you do, and, and I encourage you to continue, uh, making your voices heard and, and and getting more neighbors to come and, and, and make their, their voices heard, uh, before things that come up that affect your neighborhood. Um, you have a lot of people who share your concerns. Uh, Larson?
Uh, I just, uh, speaking of microphone here, but just wanted to point out one thing that's included in the transportation, the proposed transportation master plan, I think it's a really good addition. Um, this, uh, kind of, again, the general plan kind of is a clearinghouse, or it gathers, gathers in one all the other plans, uh, that the city has, including the transportation master plan. Um, recently, the city adopted a safety action plan, um, and, uh, we, we have, uh, there's discussion about that in our general plan, it, it talks about how the city's implementing a safety action plan that in identifies high injury street networks and proposes street intersection improvements to mitigate safety issues. They talk a, a lot about, uh, refer to a vision zero commitment to, to ultimately eliminate, uh, traffic fatalities and serious injuries. So it's one of the goals in the traffic, uh, tra- traffic chapter is to execute this, uh, safe action, uh, safety action plan. So, uh, the, this, this is definitely a big issue in the, in our transportation chapter, so.
Any other commissioner comment?
I just want to reaffirm in my own mind and just verbally that this decision tonight has no bearing on the transportation master plan. That it exists regardless of whether or not we pass this document, this document is only, um, like you said, a gathering for all those other documents, and all it does is have general statements of vision.
Yeah, that plan is a standalone plan, has nothing to do with the general plan, it was adopted independently. The general plan just refers to it for context as an appendix, but it doesn't matter what we do with the general plan, that document already exists and will continue to exist. So what you do tonight has absolutely no impact on that at all. Even if you were to make changes to this general plan tonight that aligned with comments that you heard or whatever, because you felt like you should, it, it wouldn't change the transportation plan.
So even if you said, uh, took out specific plans to note, it doesn't change that the transportation master?
That's exactly right, it still exists.
Right.
Just one other comment, that it was raised about sampling methods, and I don't know much about that other than what we learned in the work session, which uh, seemed to indicate that they were targeting, uh, that broad set of demographics for the, in their survey sampling methods for this, which I think is appropriate. And also that the, in my reading of it, it shows that about a third of the population are students, and while they may not be here, they represent an ongoing demographic that are going to be persistent, so I think it's important that we understand that students are part of our community, and they're going to continue to be part of our community, and so sampling them appropriately makes sense, so. Maybe just for the commissioners here.
Yeah, between the two universities, we have about eighty thousand students living in the Privilewar area. But we were concerned about the impact that students being surveyed may have on the survey. So we actually pulled the students out, looked at the data we got, compared it to the data with the students in, and it was extremely similar, we were surprised how similar the data was, even pulling the, the students out. But we anticipated that people would ask that question, is that really valid to count them and have the same voice as everyone else? So we looked at it both ways.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, just specifically on the, in the appendix, the public engagement summary. Question number thirty-seven asks, what is your employment status? And, uh, only twenty-three percent reported as students. So that's less than the actual population, I think, right? Any other commissioner comment? Then, would any commissioner like to put forward a motion?
I move that, uh, we recommend approval of the proposed general plan update, including its, uh, multiple appendices. And send that, uh, positive recommendation to the city council.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll move with a roll call, Commissioner Wurline?
Aye.
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 Uh, the motion, recommend approval is passed five zero. Um, with that, uh, we've completed the items on the agenda, is there motion to adjourn?
Can I just ask one thing? I, I'm sorry to belabor this, but
Go ahead.
We just said that we recommend approval of the proposed general plan update, which includes multiple appendices, which almost sounds like we're approving the multiple appendices also, but that is not the case. Can we make that language clear?
The appendices of the general plan don't include the transportation, that's a separate plan, right?
So, well, those are separate appendices, so only the appendices that are before us in this document.
You could reference A, appendices A through D.
Yes, could you clarify that? And then?
Yes.
Okay, so should we do that one more time?
We can do an amend, uh, amend the motion.
We just amend it.
We could amend the, the motion to include, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Great, perfect, thanks.
Right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at eight forty PM. Thank you all for participating.
Hey, we want to thank you for responding to my email.